Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Revere City Council meeting for October 7th. Please rise and salute the flag. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Roll call of the members, Councillor Rigo.
Here.
Here, Councillor Correggio.
Here.
Here, Councillor Gino.
Here.
Here, Councillor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councillor Haas. Here. Here, Councillor Patch. Here. Here, Councillor Penta.
Here.
Here, Councillor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councillor Reardon.
Here.
Here, Councillor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Novoselsky.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Meeting of September 16th, 2013.
Are there any omissions, changes for the minutes? Hearing none, shall approve. All in favor, all opposed, vote and so order. Councillor Guanasso.
Mr. President, point of personal privilege.
So move.
Mr. President, this past weekend, the City of Revere lost a wonderful lady. A former member of this Revere City Council, Pat Tater, lost his beautiful wife to death this past weekend. Phyllis was a wonderful individual, and certainly this city and all of us should remember that. But the more important thing, Mr. President, and it's funny at this type of time of year that this might occur, that I always remember Phyllis as when I turned the corner on the Columbus Day Parade, she was the first one out there on Revere Street greeting each and every one of us with a big smile and a big hug and words of encouragement for the day. And it was just a beautiful event to see her smiling face with her and her husband and all the kids congregating in front of her home. So she certainly will be missed by each and every one of us who knew her, and we certainly send our love and prayers to Pat and his family that they carry on the words of his wife, who was a very, very courageous woman who fought a good fight, but she is now in a better place, and we all appreciate that. I would like a moment of silence, Mr. President.
Please rise. May this all rest in peace.
Calendar item number one, hearing called is ordered upon an ordinance regulating medical marijuana in substance abuse treatment centers.
Our proponents, are there any proponents? Name and address for the.
Point of information, Mr. President.
Councillor Reardon, which point?
The packet that we received has a small error in it. I understand from the clerk that the correct designation was published properly, but in our packet it says LI. It's supposed to be TED, the TED District. That's what we're talking about here, so everybody knows. Thank you.
That is correct, councillor. Mr. Stringy.
Frank Stringy, City Planner. As you're all aware, the State Attorney General's Office has struck down a number of proposals from communities that proposed to ban these medical marijuana dispensaries. So what we did was draft an ordinance that would allow the City Council to use its police power and regulatory authority within the TED District. Now, the TED District is the Technology Enterprises District, formerly the General Industrial District that runs along Lee Burbank Highway and Railroad Street. There are some portions of it that are located off of Ward Street where the City Yard is and where the BJ's is. What we did in this district was put minimum criteria that would allow these dispensaries to be located in these areas if they are at least 400 feet removed from residential areas, residential uses, parks, playgrounds, schools, and religious facilities, and also area of critical environmental concern, which is the Romney Marsh area. So that pretty much disqualifies all the TE District that is located behind Ward Street in that area, and disqualifies the TED District that is located at Bell Circle. What it does is concentrate this district now in this use only by special permit along the frontage of Lee Burbank Highway and Railroad Street. So it would run from Railroad Street on the west side of Lee Burbank Highway to the Boston Line, and from Furlong Drive on the east side of Lee Burbank Highway to the Boston Line. We feel this is an effective zoning district that will allow the City Council to regulate this use and concentrate in the area that is far removed from residential areas, schools, playgrounds, and religious facilities. And just to note that the Planning Board will hold this public hearing tomorrow evening and report back to the City Council very shortly on its recommendation.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Hearing is seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Hearing is seeing none, we will close that side of the hearing. Councillors. Councillor Haas. Do we have to wait for the group that's going to be voting on this tomorrow night, Frank?
Yes, by law, a dual hearing has to be held, one with the Planning Board and City Council. So the Planning Board will probably come out with a recommendation tomorrow night.
Right.
The City Council will have it by Wednesday morning.
Okay, so at that point in time, then we can address the issue before us?
Yes, you can.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sure you know that I was one of the persons, if not the person, who wanted to ban these completely in our city. Unfortunately, I was struck down by the law. So I think that a good compromise is the area chosen. I think if it's away from a playground, away from schools, away from residences, I can't see how we can have any better location than that. So I commend the City Planner and everybody that worked on this to come up with this designation. Thank you very much.
Councillor Powers. Thank you, Mr. President. Frank, I'm looking at the zoning schedule here, and are you saying that this could be allowed in a light industrial district?
Not allowed in a light industrial district.
That's wrong. Okay. Okay, and this is the wrong information. It says by special permit right here. Okay, so this is a misprint, because the first thing that came to my mind was Mills Avenue. That's a light industrial, and I certainly wouldn't want to see this type of facility down there.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
It's not included in that district.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councillor Correggio.
Thank you. Even though I'm not in favor of these facilities, I know we have to comply with regulations. At least it's in an area that's away from residential areas, schools, or near children. And I know we have to comply, but I'm not really in favor of any of these facilities in Revere. Thank you.
Councillor Penta.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, Councillor Powers, what he brought up is the first public hearing we had that was too broad and too general across the city, and I want to commend, Frank, even though this isn't my wad, that, I mean, sometimes you have to look at common sense, especially when you're dealing with the state, that, you know, we put a auditorium on, the state sent us back a strong letter saying cities and towns can't put a auditorium in this because people voted this overwhelmingly, and it has to go somewhere. So pick somewhere that would be less intrusive to anybody in the city. And if there's any area, unfortunately, this is the area. So I commend you and the people you did this with, and that if one does come here, that it would be part of the most isolated area in the city, away from any residents, that you don't even have to go by a residence home to get there or after you leave there. And I commend you on the spot you picked, that I think, you know, the city has to do this, but I don't want to bring up other stuff the city got sued over in the years past, millions of dollars, and because of stuff like this. But I want to commend you and your team that come up with that spot. And Councillor Reardon is, I know is calling to the subcommittee, so I'm going to leave it at that, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Frank, now, just, this isn't only medical marijuana we're talking for location, right?
Right.
We're talking about the substance abuse centers, which we had originally put in the.
Highway business district.
Highway business, and we took that out. And there was one other one, wasn't it? Just those two items?
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, I think it's a good compromise. We had thought about putting it in the LI, which I know when we thought about it with Councillor Powers, we decided it wasn't a good location, and I think he came up with a great, great compromise, and I look forward to us establishing this and protecting our city in many ways. So with that, councillors, this will be put into zoning, and we have to wait for the recommendation of the Planning Board to come out. So this will come out on the table to vote at our October 28th meeting. Committee.
Calendar item number two, hearing called is ordered upon a proposed loan order in the amount of $1.5 million for the purpose of purchasing two fire apparatus.
On the hearing, all those in favor, all propose. All in favor? Hearing is seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Are there anybody opposed to this? Anybody opposed? Anybody opposed? Hearing is seeing none, we'll close that side of the order of the hearing. Gentlemen, I know we all had a committee meeting on this last week, so hopefully we'll hold back our comments because we kind of said everything last week, and when we come up to committee reports, we'll vote on it. So with that, we'll close this hearing. I will be glad to reopen it for this moment, Chief.
I'm sorry, I got confused. I thought you said in favor meaning the council. Obviously, I am a proponent of this bond order for the fire apparatus, as we discussed in the Ways and Means Committee meeting last Monday night, I believe. The bids were submitted with collaborative bid with Malden and Medfit for up to six pieces of apparatus. I feel we got a real good price on the apparatus that we're getting, and that I hope you find this favorable to vote further and for this bond order. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Now closed.
Calendar item number three, report of the Ways and Means Subcommittee.
Councillor Rigo.
Thank you, Mr. President. On last Monday, the Ways and Means Subcommittee met with two items on the agenda. One was Committee Number 13-233, which was a loan order in the amount of $2 million for repairs to the Winthrop Avenue wastewater system. We heard from officials from CDM, and there were a few questions about timing and how long of a project this will be. We were told it'd be about three months, and the amount of $2 million will not have any principal forgiveness, like some of our water and sewer bonds do, unfortunately, because of the emergency nature of this project. There will be a neighborhood meeting coming up, I believe, October 19th, Saturday, and that will be held at Immaculate Conception Church, so anybody who is.
Point of information, Mr. President. Councillor.
I got the same emails you've gotten, and I spoke to Mr. Darty from setting the meetings up, and I talked to Miles Kennedy, the mayor's office. I believe because of conflict with the church, certain hours that they're going to have it here, Saturday at 1:00 on the 19th. So just want to confirm, but there will be flyers sent out, 9/11 calls, just to.
Thank you, Kennedy. That hasn't come out yet, but through the mayor's office, but continue, councillor.
Okay, I know we had gotten a couple of emails about a day, and I thought that was finalized, but I stand corrected. So either way, the loan order for $2 million for the emergency repairs was reported out favorably. What I do, what I would like to see, and we don't need it in order to vote, but I would like to see an impact statement done, financial analysis done on the impact for the ratepayers, because as Director of Finance had mentioned, this will have an impact on the ratepayers for the city, and I think we would be well informed to know what exactly that impact will be. The other item in our committee was the $1.5 million.
Councillor, we have to vote on those separately, so let's take them both out separately.
All righty.
Okay, thank you. On the recommendation of the committee.
Shall the City Council approve a loan order in the amount of $2 million for emergency repairs to the sewer system on Winthrop Avenue? Councillor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Gino. Yes, Councillor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Haas. Yes, Councillor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Reardon.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, the loan order has been approved.
On the resolution on the loan order, roll call.
On the resolution, Councillor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Haas. Yes, Councillor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Reardon.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, the resolution has been adopted.
Vote and so order. Councillor Rigo, on the second item.
Thank you, Mr. President. The second item that was in committee was the loan order for the amount of $1.5 million for the purpose of purchasing two fire apparatus. Again, this is equipment that will be essential to the city's public safety. The committee reported this out favorably. One thing of note, and I think it was a pretty good idea by Councillor Guanasso, was the idea of studying whether or not the big apparatus that we do use is, if the use of the big apparatus should be reconsidered, and should the use of either sport utility vehicles or smaller, smaller equipment be, and cheaper equipment, be more appropriate for the fire department. And I would support the councillor's push for either a study on that or some further information about whether or not that's appropriate for the city. But for right now, I know that the million and a half that we're talking about will be essential to our public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Just so everybody knows, this is not only for the two pieces of equipment, it also includes turn-in equipment, turnout equipment. I do that all the time, Chief. Turnout equipment for, backup equipment for all the firefighters, all their gear. Right now, their old gear is old, and we need some replacements, so this also covers that. So with that, vote on a roll, on roll call.
Shall the City Council approve a loan order in the amount of $1.5 million for the purchase of two fire apparatus and related gear? Councillor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Reardon.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, the loan order has been approved.
Vote and so order.
Calendar item number four, report of the zoning Subcommittee.
Councillor Reardon.
Thank you, Mr. President. The zoning Subcommittee of the Revere City Council met this evening at 5:00 to review and take up two matters, the first of which is Item C-13-17, petition from K. Kang Lang Inc., 11 Talbot Street, Sargus, Mass., seeking permission from the Revere City Council to modify a non-conforming standing accessory sign which exceeds a height of 20 feet and a signed area of 20 square feet and replace the current roof sign on Lot B at 160 Squire Road. This matter was, again, taken up by the Subcommittee and reported out unanimously for a vote for the entire City Council this evening.
Okay, we'll have separate votes on each item. Roll call.
On the special permit application, C-13-117, shall the City Council approve the special permit to modify a non-conforming standing accessory sign and to replace the current roof sign at 160 Squire Road? Councillor Rigo. Yes, Councillor Correggio. Yes, Councillor Gino. Yes, Councillor Guanasso. Yes, Councillor Haas. Yes, Councillor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Reardon.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted.
Tim Councillor.
With apologies to the right side of the table, apparently I technologically caused an issue here. The second item is C-13-18, petition from new singular wireless PCS LLC for request to install 12 panel antennas and associated equipment at 300 Ocean Avenue, Revere. This matter, again, was also taken up by the full Subcommittee and reported out favorably for a vote by the full City Council this evening. Thank you.
Roll call.
Shall the City Council grant the relief requested for new singular wireless PCS at 300 Ocean Avenue? Councillor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Haas. Yes, Councillor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Reardon.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted.
Vote and so order.
Calendar item number five, report of the Appointment Subcommittee.
Councillor Guanasso.
Mr. President, earlier this afternoon, the Appointment Subcommittee met. We had one item on the agenda. It was Item Number 13-231, the appointment of Petrillo &amp; Son Corporation, 31 Main Street, North Reading, as a licensed drain layer. It was voted out favorably and unanimously. I would wish that this council did the same. Thank you, Mr. President.
On the recommendation of the Appointment Subcommittee, all in favor, all opposed, vote and so order.
Calendar item number six, communication from Clear Channel requesting to withdraw the special permit application for four for a long drive.
Any comments from the councillors on the withdrawal, on the motion to allow them to withdraw without prejudice? Roll call.
Shall the City Council allow the application of Clear Channel to withdraw without prejudice? Councillor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Haas. Yes, Councillor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Reardon.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been withdrawn without prejudice. Calendar item number seven, communication from the Election Commissioner relative to the moving of two polling locations in Ward 6.
Little Clerk, please read the communication.
Dear Honorable City Council Members, in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 54, Section 24, Designation of Polling Places, the Board of Election Commissioners is seeking approval from the Revere City Council to move two polling locations at the AC Whalen School at 107 New Hall Street, Cafeteria, and Ward 6, known as Precincts 1 and 2, to St. Mary's of the Assumption Church. If approved, the change would become effective on January 1st, 2014, and notice will be sent to all voters affected by the change in the annual city census mailing done in January. On Friday, September 20th, 2013, at 10:00 a.m., a site visit was held at St. Mary of the Assumption Church wherein Ward 6 City Councillor Charles J. Patch Sr., members of the Board of Election Commissioners, Diane Arcolola, Richard A. Sorrentino, and John Camerata, toured the facility to ensure that it met all of the requirements as stated in Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 54, Elections. The move to St. Mary of the Assumption Church would offer the voters, poll workers, and candidates ample parking, less congestion during peak voting hours, a spacious and comfortable room to hold voting sessions, and the spaces handicap accessible. Moving the poll locations to St. Mary's of the Assumption Church, where the combined total number of voters is 3,479, would offer the parents and teachers of the school relief from Election Day activities. The Board of Election Commissioners looks forward to a favorable reply. Respectfully submitted, Diane Arcolola.
Councillor Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. What we're trying to do here is actually, first of all, I want to thank St. Mary's Church, Father Barry, for offering the hall at the bottom of the church for us. This is all, this all stems from trying to get the voting places out of the schools for public safety reasons, and also the congestion and the problems that we have with the sign holders and what have you. I just feel, after looking at the, visiting the hall, it's going to accommodate the people, and I think eventually they'll be happy that we made this move. I just want to say that, the, I just want to make, I want to stress that on the next election, it's still at the Whalen School. This ain't going to take effect until the year 2014. So I think eventually, after it's all said and done, the people of Ward 6 will be happy that we did this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, on the approval of the communication, all in favor, all opposed, vote and so order.
On to motions. Calendar item number eight, motion presented by Councillor Powers that the mayor direct the Suffolk County Maintenance Crew to clean the area of litter and debris on School Street behind the former Dairy Queen site.
Councillor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's the area that abuts eastern Tapley Avenue, True Street up there, and I was down there Saturday speaking with some constituents, and I mean, that is terrible. In fact, I think it not only needs to be cleaned, but it needs to be maintained periodically. Thank you, Mr. President.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed, vote and so order.
Motion presented by Councillor Novoselsky that the Revere Traffic Commission revise the Revere revised ordinances and have the DBW post signs accordingly as follows. Schedule 8 of Title 10, Parking Restrictions Generally. Location, Hillside Avenue, Southerly Side, Direction, Easterly, from Revere Beach Parkway to the property line at 21 Hillside Ave. No parking anytime.
Councillors, this came in from the neighbors, and it is a difficult location for people to take the turn up onto Hillside Ave from the Revere Beach Parkway, and we've had it there, so we would ask that this be referred to the Traffic Commission for approval. All in favor, all opposed, vote and so order.
Calendar item number 10, motion presented by Councillor Patch that the mayor request the Assessors' Office to look into the feasibility of establishing a property tax ceiling for resident homeowners 65 years of age and older. Further, that the findings and analysis be reported back to the City Council. Many older residents are on a fixed income and simply cannot afford the annual tax increases.
Councillor Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. The reason I'm putting this, I put the motion in is that I know, I know I can go back to the, probably to the year 2000, ever since we've been getting increases in our taxes. And also that the senior citizens have been suffering, the property owners, also what our, that Councillor Rigo mentioned earlier, that last week we found out that our water rates have been. Ever since, we've been getting increases in our taxes. And also that the senior citizens have been suffering, the property owners, also what our, that Counselor Rigo mentioned earlier, that last week we found out that our water rates have been going up every year since I can remember. And also, we're going to be hit again with this new problem we just voted for. The reason I want to, I want to put it out there is there's a lot of false information going on out there about the mitigation package for the Suffolk Downs. And, oh, that money's already spent, you know. I want people out there to realize that, you know, I made in my public address on Revere TV how I want to help the, with this money that we're getting in the mitigation package. I wanted to go back to the people of Revere. And believe me, there is, there is a lot of money that's going to come into the city if we do, if we, if we do get that casino. But I mean, that's, that's the light at the end of the tunnel. And that's, that's first, it's got to go, it's got to be voted on. And as you know, it's got to be granted to us by the Gaming Commission. But it's a lot of money. And if we get, and we do it right, we can help the senior citizens stay in Revere, in their houses. We can, we can hire more, more police. We can, we're going to have a brand-new youth, youth center. We can do so much. I just want, that's why I want to start, I started with this motion, and I plan on putting other motions in, that I want the people out there to know that if we're fortunate enough to get this money, that nothing can be spent without the City Council and okay, okay in it. So whoever's saying out there that the mayor got it all spent and, you know, you know, it's just so many false rumors out there. So we got to start thinking now and planning ahead. Hopefully, we will get the money and then we can, we can, you know, we can spend it the right way. We can give it back to the people of Revere. And just hopefully that, that will, that will happen. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Guanasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. I absolutely think this is a great motion from Counselor Patch. I think that obviously it works in a few other cities and towns throughout the Commonwealth. And I say, why not Revere? We all know all too well that the populace of Revere is pretty much senior citizens and most of the homeowners are seniors. And with the good faith of God, they've lived a longer life than was projected, so, and that's a good fortune. So in their later years, I don't feel that anybody who's worked so hard and dedicated themselves to their family and to build a home, buy a home in our community, and live here, this is the least we can do. And with the possible opportunity of the casino coming on board, and I concur 1,000% with Counselor Patch, I hear all too often, too, that it's a done deal, there's certain things, there's going to be no relief for Revere, taxpayers are going to get it again, there's not, there's nothing going to happen. That's not true. And I, for one, know that Counselor Patch is going to get reelected, and I know for one that I'm going to be reelection. So we're going to be dedicated to this effort. And I know that I speak for each and every one of these City Councils who sit here this evening. They're going to be dedicated to giving something back to our community. That's our obligation. And I don't want to hear that, oh, nothing, we're going to build a bridge, or we're going to do this with it. We're going to give something back to this city. That's a given. And I, and I think the mayor would be dedicated to that effort, too. I think it's a full-court press with all of us, that we know that the taxpayers need, whether it be in the tax relief in real estate, a water relief in the tax bill, water bills, some relief has to be given. And I think the more we speak of this, the more we inform people that this is what this council is going to do. That's not a guess. We're going to do, given the opportunity that we get these funds, that's going to happen. This is not, you know, and so I just feel very strongly about the fact that good things will happen when we receive the monies from this casino and the possibility of it coming here. And, and don't listen to the naysayers who are out there constantly, constantly being aside, the Monday morning quarterbacks throwing bombs in the wrong direction at a possibility of giving us an opportunity to better serve our community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Correggio.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's an excellent motion by Counselor Patch. I think it's about time we try to address our seniors, especially seniors that served in all of our wars, World War II and other wars, Vietnam and down. They've worked hard all their lives and, you know, they, they enjoy living in Revere, and I don't want to see them have to sell their home because of the economy the way it is, because it's very difficult out there. No matter where you go, there's always price increases, whether you're in a store, whether, no matter where you go, there's increases. And the seniors are on fixed incomes. They don't get the increases like someone that's working. But I think it's important that we, especially with the mitigation money, that we have some conditions in there to make sure our seniors are protected and that we can keep them living in Revere. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hass.
Thank you, Mr. President. Not too long ago, in the mayor's office, we went in there and it was, I brought up the fact that I want to see a portion of this money be used to offset the real estate tax rate and the water rates. It is only proper that we look at this foul money coming into the community and use it properly. And I think the proper way of doing it is basically using a percentage of it to be used for the tax relief, both in water and sewage. And I honestly believe we should do it. And this is all, at this point in time, when the mayor comes up with his recommendations, because as we all know, we have many, many needs in this community. But the greatest need is to give it to our taxpayers so they can save the money. Very good.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to commend Counselor Patch for this motion. Not only is it a great motion, I think it might be the best motion he's ever put in since he's been on the council. I think it's a, you know, I got to bring the mitigation agreement into this just for a second, because I was out putting a sign up today, and I was confronted by some young, I'll call them young thugs, but I probably, I could probably find a better word. But they, they said to me, they stuck a card in my face and said, "Do you know about this? Do you know that the money's already been spent that they promised you?" And, and of course, I know a little about the mitigation agreement, so I got in his face and luckily, they didn't jump me, because they were a lot younger than me, and it wouldn't have been pretty. But there's a lot of misinformation out there. We are certainly going to help seniors with water and sewer rates and tax rates, but the bottom line is, people need to know that the city of Revere is going to receive a million, minimum of $128 million if the casino comes to Suffolk Downs. That's a minimum of $128 million over 15 years. That could double if they meet some of their benchmarks. But there is a misinformation campaign. There's a lot of money being spent to put out bad, false information and scare tactics going on. And there's an army of people. So I followed these gentlemen, and they got in a Virginia, a car with Virginia plates and drove away. And I even took the license plate number down. So there's a lot of misinformation out there. I, again, back to this motion, I think it's a great motion. I'm absolutely looking forward to the analysis when it comes back. And this, I, so many seniors say to me, "I can't afford my tax bill. What am I going to do? I'm going to lose my house." And so, again, my, congratulations to Counselor Patch for putting this motion in. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rigo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to commend Counselor Patch on, on this idea. I would say it's an idea that would be good enough to probably go into the mitigation agreement itself. What I am a little bit concerned about is, how much money are we talking about? How much, how much money are we going to be forgiving in, in, in taxes? Do we have any idea of what, I mean, when I do just kind of back-of-the-envelope math, if we...
Point of information? Counselor Patch, your point of information?
That's why I, I put it to the assessors for the finding and analysis to be reported back. I mean, that's part of the motion.
Understood. Counselor, continue.
I would, I would hope that there'd be some range of what we're, what we're looking at or what we're expecting, because at the end of the day, we can promise all that we want out of the mitigation package and out of the money that comes into the city, but there's only, there's a finite amount of money. And if we're looking at giving, you know, a $1,000 break to 5,000 people, that's $5 million. And that's more than the, the money that we're going to get in the first year for the, for the mitigation agreement from Suffolk Downs. So I just want to make sure that we're not making false promises either. And I know there is a lot of misinformation going around. I think that's because of the lack of information that's been presented. But I do like the idea. I, I wish this was something that was part of the mitigation agreement. Like I said, I think, I think these types of, of dedicated revenue pockets of money would have been well-suited in, in the conversation, because it would have allowed for people to know that they're going to get a break on their water and sewer, or a break on their, or their, on their, real estate taxes, or property taxes. And the fact that there's no dedicated revenue for anything, it leads to a lot of misinformation. And I just want people to be realistic, because...
Counselor, you're coming to your three minutes.
That's fine. I just want people to be realistic. We cannot promise everything under the sun. And if we're talking about a $800 or a $1,000 tax break, that is going to be all the money that we get in from, from Suffolk Downs. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Penta.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, most of the speakers that spoke, basically, I agree with, I agree with the motion wholeheartedly. And it clearly says feasibility. So in other words, what is it going to cost before we even think of spending it? But it's something worth spending some money on. If it's 100, 200, 300, it'll go a long way. But that being said, all this money that we're talking about, and it's a lot of money, because I've talked to several people that were edging against it, heard the same thing, only 4 million. After I got through talking for 10 or 15 minutes, and I could have won it for an hour, they looked at me and said, "I didn't realize that. I didn't know that." A lot of people don't, and I know the mayor's having some across-the-city meetings in the public, he's having some round tables, and they're starting tomorrow night on TV. So to educate the people exactly what we're getting. But if the vote doesn't go through...
Excuse me, Counselor? Yes. Can we stick to the motion on the reduction of monies? Well, I am, but I, I want to... Because we've already gone through, you know, it's not, I'm not trying to give you a high time, but... I understand, Mr. President. Let everybody else speak on the mitigation. Now you're going to shut me up, but... You know, I just want you to... I'll go on for one more minute. Try and concentrate on the motion. Thank you. One more minute, because it's the most crucial vote that this city's ever going to take. And I don't understand what the hurry is to get out of these meetings every night for. So I mean, we're shutting people down on something, probably the most crucial thing that you're going to vote on in the last 30 years or the next 50 years. Counselor, point of information. Point of information. Now I'm going to give you now, Counselor. Yeah. I'm not shutting you down. I'm just trying to keep it to the motion that we're relating to, and that's the reduction of taxes for senior citizens. Well, you know, we can, you know, I know the other guys went, you know, went beyond, and unfortunately, I should have shut them down. You know, but talk another minute on it, and please... Thank you. Try and keep to the senior citizens. It's all irrelevant. In other words, Counselor Patch put this motion in, mentioned if we get mitigation money. So if we get no mitigation money, all these motions we're putting in, and hopefully we can lower water rates, hopefully we can lower taxes, we have no chance of it. We have a chance to revamp this whole city, reform this city for the better of the city. There's a lot of money coming in, there's a lot of false stories going out there. Trust me, this vote is very crucial to the city. It's a lot of money. And you know something? This council's going to say how we spend that money, along with the mayor. So it's not being thrown out there. And of course, everybody up here wants to lower rates, wants to lower tax rates, and there's some needy things. No one talks about how many hotels may be built if this casino comes here. Millions and millions in tax revenue coming to the city coffices that lower the taxes to give senior citizens breaks like this. Millions of dollars in hotels that won't come if it's not built. So I can go on forever, and I thank you for, for the extra time, but we'll talk about this Saturday, mitigation. But I would like the people of Revere... Thank you, Counselor. ...to realize what is at stake here. And trust me, there's a lot at stake here. So don't listen to people have signs up that have an interest in Everett, that want to see it go there. You know, listen to the people up here in the council that know the facts, the mayor and everybody else. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counselor. Madam Vice President.
Thank you. Counselor Patch, this is a great motion, and I definitely support your efforts in it. And I think that, you know, when I spoke to a lot of the seniors in this community, they love living here, and they like that their children and their grandchildren are growing up here. And I think that this is a motion that could make their quality of life better, living in this community. And I think Counselor Hass also brought up a great point, that, you know, the second thing you hear about after you talk about property taxes is water and sewer rates. And that's one of the second biggest things that are really hurting our residents, because the rates are so high that it makes it difficult to just get by. And I think that any motions like this that are going to help our seniors and our homeowners in our community are really great ones. And regardless of mitigation, and regardless of all the issues that we're talking about, it's something that affects our residents, and it's something that's going to affect our residents now, and in five years, and in 10 years. And it's something that we need to continue to look at, and something that we need to definitely make sure we're preventing, because we want these people to stay in Revere, and we want them to have their children and their grandchildren and their great-grandchildren living in our community. And by making these little ways to make their life better here and there, I think that it's a great way to contribute back to these taxpayers that have paid into our community for the past 10, 20, 30 years. So, great job, Counselor Patch. Thank you.
Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's an excellent motion, and I commend Counselor Patch for making this motion. I also think, you know, we should also, when we're sitting down with the mayor devising a formula for distribution of these monies, that they certainly include senior citizens, but also working families that are struggling in this city to put food on their table every day in the week, struggling to buy clothing for their children. Those are the people also that should be included in this. And the people that should be excluded, and I hope we'll all take that into consideration, are the absentee landlords who own three and six-family homes who live out the city...
Excuse me, Counselor. Counselor.
Let me finish, please.
Excuse me. They relate, we're relating to senior citizens. We're not talking about absentee landlords. They have to live in the house.
No, we're talking about a formula to distribute the money. That's what we're talking about.
Right. And keep it to the 65s.
And I just want to make, let me finish my statement, please. That should be excluded, the people that are making a profit from three and six-family homes who live outside the city, who could care less about this city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Gentlemen and lady, you know, and I repeat myself, you know, we're talking about our senior citizens. Now, yes, everybody mentioned mitigation, there's going to be money, but we don't even know if it's going to happen yet. We want everybody to vote for it. You know, I, you know, Counselor Penta and I are still on the same page, believe it or not. And it's something we want to help our 65 and older, if that's the age, but we have to realize, what's going to happen here is the 65 and olders may get the, a reduction, but then you're going to get all the other folks, the middle-aged, you know, the younger kids are going to get an increase in, because somebody has to make up the difference. So this is why we want to see what the formula, like Counselor Rigo said, we have to see where everything's going to happen.
Point of information, uh... I can mention maybe Chelsea or Boston, but they're able to make it up through commercial taxes, which River unfortunately right now is not able to. So that's why I brought it up with the, with the, with the mitigation, will maybe bring more commercial taxes that will be able to do this.
Understood, Councilor. So, you know, we're talking about the 65s, but there's going to be a balance there. Now, I agree that we have to let the, the assessors and the mayor look at the analysis and see where it's going to go. That's the bottom line, okay? So with that, on the motion, all in favor, all opposed, vote and so ordered.
Calendar item number 11, motion presented by Councilor Nowoselski that the mayor requests National Grid to install a new street light on pole number 3841 at 95 Arlington Ave. This is a dead end street and it is very dark. This request is made in the interest of public safety.
I believe this is self-explanatory on the motion, all in favor, all opposed, vote and so ordered.
Calendar item number 12, motion presented by Councilor Powers that certificates of commendation be awarded to the River Little League White Sox in recognition of their winning back-to-back championships in 2013 and 2012 at the next meeting of the city council on October 28, 2013.
Councilor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll reserve my comments for the 28th and the motion speaks for itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. All in favor, all opposed, vote and so ordered.
Late motion presented by Councilor Nowoselski that the city council present a certificate of appreciation to the Beauchamp Improvement Committee for their beautification and upkeep of Cummings Park, Kimberley Park and Donnelly Square.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, you know, I have, when Ward 1 did not, and Beauchamp did not have a council way back when, you know, after we lost Council Kimmerly, I put the motion in to name the park in Donnelly Square for him and I'm glad of that. But I'm glad to have seen Cummings Park this past weekend, or the weekend before, be beautified by the Beautification and Beauchamp Improvement Committee. And I think it's very important that we let these people know that we appreciate what they did. Now, I mean, I am going to let Councilor Penta on it because I know he has some words on it, but one of the reasons that I am doing it is because all the folks that are on the committee include Councilor Penta and the folks on the committee didn't feel it was, it may have been uncomfortable for him to do it. I know he really doesn't care, he would have done it. But it's my pleasure to accommodate the folks of Beauchamp and I appreciate the work that they're doing and keep their neighborhood and the city clean and beautiful. So, Councilor Penta.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, no matter how they get the recognition, doesn't matter to me, they deserve the recognition. And it's not just these three areas, it's the whole Ward 1 section down there that they get involved with, it's behind the school, if it's a public stairs, whatever it may be. But they did put six years of sweat and blood into that, that park and I'm proud to say that I'm a member of the BIC. And I'll save my comments for that night. And like I said, I commend you for putting the motion. I know they went to you and I thought it'd be awkward for me, but either way, as long as they get recognition, they deserve it, it's, it's well deserved. Thank you.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed, vote and so ordered.
Late motion presented by Councilor Riordan that the mayor request either National Grid or the Superintendent of Public Works to install lighting in the public parking rear next to the central fire station and to reinstall lighting to the front of the station. Since the reconfiguration of street lighting in the area, lighting in the parking lot and the parking area is deficient and a public safety hazard at night and the front of the station is no longer adequately, adequately lit.
Councilor Riordan.
Thank you. Very briefly, Mr. President, and I thank Councilor Patch for directing a constituent inquiry regarding this issue. And I did actually take note of this myself, probably because it's getting darker earlier and earlier, but, and also because of the fact that with the Valari Restaurant down there and some other, some other restaurants and other places operating later, it's pretty obvious that that this area is woefully attended to light-wise and someone is going to either trip on something, the pavement is all bad there, plus you have buses going through there and cabs going through there and other vehicles going through there. And in, in looking at this, I called a fire chief and he expressed to me that the other issue out front of the fire station is that since we took down the, the street poles, there was a, I think a mercury vapor directed directly on the front of the fire station, on the flag especially, that is not there. So I would include this in the motion. Thank you.
Councilor, one question. Are we looking at streetlights or floodlights?
Whatever lights the area down below, sir. I don't care whether it's a swat, you can call it a, you can call it a pink elephant if you want, as long as it lights up the parking lot in the front of the station.
Because floodlights are brighter, you know, if they light up the station, you know, they're more direct.
Mr. President, if you would prefer a flood, I will accept that as a friendly amendment and we will throw...
I will leave it up to you, we're just trying to make it clear.
All the floodlights we possibly can in there.
Thank you. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed, vote and so ordered. Being no further business, before we leave, I know this is early for some people, late for the others, but the Red Sox are leading 1 to 0 in the second inning. Thank you. Motion adjourned. So move. Next meeting's on the 28th, public hearings.